Good morning, and welcome to the May 9, 2023 Land Use Meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Everyone, please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we ask you for wisdom, knowledge, and direction for every county commissioner and staff and every county employee. We pray for protection over all those serving in law enforcement, every firefighter, all first responders, and everyone in Hillsborough County in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Grady, I don't believe we have any changes, but do you need to review any withdrawals or continuances?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, Brian Grady, Development Services. We have no changes on tonight's agenda, so I'll go through the published withdrawals, continuance, and remands, beginning on page three of the agenda. The first item is item A1, rezoning PD 18-0996. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the June 13, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. Item A2, PRS 22-1504, this application out of order to be heard and has been continued to the June 13, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. Item A3, PRS 23-0136, this application is to be continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the June 13, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. Item A4, PRS Application 23-0210, this application is out of order to be heard and has been continued to the July 18, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. Item A5, PRS 23-0317, staff is requesting this item be continued to the June 13, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. And item A6, Vacation Petition 22-0019, staff is requesting this item be continued to the June 13, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting. That concludes all withdrawals, continuances, and remands.
Court of motion to approve the withdrawals.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We have a somewhat unique item, B15, as far as land use hearing offer extension for six months. My understanding, we need to offer a public comment, see if anyone wants to speak to this item. Does staff need to make any introductory comments?
Commissioner, just to note that this is a short-term extension while we -- to provide time for advertising for a full slate of Luho applicants.
Okay. So this is a public comment portion for B15. Does anyone here want to speak to that item? If not, then we'll close the public comment.
Move B15.
Does that require a motion?
You can proceed to approve the entire consent agenda at this point.
All right.
Move consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, so if anyone here for a B item, your application's been approved. At this time, if you're planning on testifying today, please stand and raise your right hand so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Grady, we're on the public hearing part of the agenda.
Yes, the first item is agenda item E1, PRS Application 23-0154. There's requests for a major modification to existing planned development. That's located in the Wyoma area. If HTV could put on the Elmo, yes. And it's located in the Wyoma area, south of Wyoma proper and south of Sun City Center, east of 301. The request is for, again, a minor modification to Pod F within the larger planned development. This pod is, as with all the other development pods within the PD, are pending a minimum and maximum range of development. For this project, the current range of developments is minimum 60 and maximum 80. The request is to modify the maximum amount of residential units from 80 to 100. So the range would now be 60 through 100. No additional entitlements were being requested within the larger PD for this request. It's just simply a reallocation of existing entitlements within the PD. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Good morning.
Good morning, Isabel Albert with Half. Thank you. Good morning, Isabel Albert with Half, 1,000 North Ashley Drive. I have nothing further unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone here support the application? Anyone in opposition? Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, next item.
Commissioners, the next item is agenda item E2, PRS Application 23-0223. This is request for a minor modification to a planned development, the Summerfield Plan Development. This specific parcel being modified within the larger planned development is located at the southwest corner of Big Ben Road and Clement Pride Boulevard. Currently, the PD, this parcel within the PD is approved for a daycare. The request is to add the allow, the ability to have a 125-foot cellular communications tower on this parcel. This will make the cell tower permissible. The project will still have to get a special use permit with approval by the land use hearing officer to demonstrate the requirements, to demonstrate the need for this cell tower in accordance with the requirements in the Land Development Code. I'll note that hearing is scheduled for February 22. The applicant is meeting all setback requirements and will be camouflaging it as a clock tower with this graphic, which is in the backup submitted by the applicant. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Good morning, sir.
Hello. We actually have a presentation that will be for someone that's not here. He's online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. The presentation.
Okay. I'm Lisa Ravis of Becker Polyakoff. I represent the applicant, LCS Communications. Unfortunately, Katie Berkey was unable to be in attendance this morning, so I'll be presenting for her. As staff mentioned, we're requesting a modification to a planned development to add an allowance for a wireless communication facility to a development pod. I'm accompanied by development team members that are available to answer any questions you may have. Jared Jackson is our civil engineer and site designer with Tower Engineering Professionals, and he is in chambers. Harold Timmons, our zoning and real estate specialist, is also with Tower Engineering Professionals. And Jason Polly is our radio frequency engineer with T-Mobile. I'd like to request that our team members resume and a copy of our PowerPoint presentation be entered into the record, please. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Timmons.
I'm controlling the presentation, but we can move to the next slide. Thank you very much. As staff has mentioned, we are here today requesting your recommendation of approval. We'll go back one slide. Okay, we'll go there. We're recommending your approval so that we can add the communication tower use to the list of approved uses that are part of this planned development. Next slide, please. As we said, we are proposing a 125-foot-tall tripod stealth concealment clock tower that we'll be using to support wireless communications equipment. Next slide. This is a map of the location of the property located basically at the southwest corner of Big Ben Road and Clement Pride Boulevard. The structure that we are proposing will allow for co-location of up to four total users. Our ingress and egress will be via Clement Pride Boulevard via the access easement. The tower compound will be 40 feet by 40 feet in size and be a leased area. It will be enclosed by an eight-foot-tall chain link fence with green vinyl slats to limit visibility into the compound. Landscaping will be provided, and it will be a combination of a Type A buffer in accordance with the LDC Section 6.06.06 on the western and southern property, southern leased boundaries, and a Type B buffer around the exterior of the equipment compound as depicted on our site plan. The facility will be unmanned. It will operate 24 hours a day and 7 days a week. Visitation to the site is limited to equipment and support maintenance personnel, generally one trip per month for the most part. Signing at the facility is limited to that regarding safety and tower over contact, and there are no light, there is no lighting proposed or required for this particular facility. Next slide, please. The next slide generally shows the interior layout of the compound, shows the location of the buffers, the location of the tower within that compound, and the location of the initial carriers' equipment, the remaining slots for future carriers. Next slide, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm sorry. As you can see from the graphic, the tower height is 125 feet. It's a concealment clock tower. The initial tenant will be T-Mobile, and as I've indicated before, structurally, it will handle up to four total users. Next slide. This is generally the layout and the location of the tower and compound on the property. You can see where it's located, setbacks, distance from roads, and where our access points are. Next slide. We're asking for no design exceptions or variances, and our request complies with all applicable code requirements. Tree removal is not a requirement. No objections we have seen from county staff or the Hillsborough County Airport Authority, and staff recommends approval of the request subject to the conditions of approval detailed in the staff report. Next slide. In closing, there's radio frequency need for a tower in this location. As the applicant and staff has confirmed, the proposed development complies with all applicable code requirements. The proposed concealment design, buffering, compound fence screening, and existing vegetation on the north and east sides of the subject property greatly reduce visual impact of the facility. The proposed development will not be detrimental to natural resources, public facilities, or the public welfare. The proposed site in connection with the larger wireless network will provide a public benefit, allowing for more reliable calls to emergency personnel and allowing the location of distress callers to be more readily determined. We respectfully ask that the commission accept the staff's recommendation and approve the application as proposed with the outlined conditions. That concludes my presentations, and I'm available for any questions that anyone may have at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone here in support of the application? Anyone in opposition?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm a resident. I will be backing up. I live in the parcel that directly sits behind where this proposed tower is going to be. I'm here to express concerns regarding the application 230223 and also SU CW 230218. And while we're only addressing the one today, it's difficult to delineate the two since one depends on the other. The change to the existing zoning will allow for the construction of this wireless communications facility, but while granting that, it's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. At this point in time, it's a residential neighborhood, and what we're putting in there is something that has a different design, height, and the property maintenance is in question. It would create a nuisance to those property owners directly in visual contact with the proposed wireless facility. It would impact property value specifically to those adjacent properties. The current landowner has already shown that they have not maintained the current property, including a structure, which is a mobile home on that property, in a reasonable manner. There's no reasonable expectation that any new construction would be maintained any better. The law firm of Gilbert Garcia Group was contacted and retained in this manner and did a review of the 41 documents that are in public access that we were able to access. These documents included relevant mapping, planning, and public records. Review of the Land Development Code yielded that while we are allowed to have those towers in the residential planned development, they must meet those specific criteria and require that special use approval, which is on May 22. The attorneys questioned the findings of Tower Engineering, that there were no other reasonable alternatives in the area for placement of the wireless communications facility. As stated by the applicant, an extensive search was conducted within a one-mile radius, and six structures were identified. All six already contain T-Mobile equipment, so with six sites in a one-mile radius, there still is a requirement for yet another. You would have to assume that all future towers would need to be constructed at a minimum of one mile apart. This does question the capacity and existing wireless coverage, and the need to establish another facility in the middle of a neighborhood when there are a number, pardon me, there are a number of other surrounding towers in the area. The community is completely residential, and the homeowners purchased the community with the exception, expectation that their homes would be surrounded with other residential homes and boarded by churches. In 2014, the landowner placed a trailer on the property. The county was contacted to oppose that trailer. According to the development review manager at the time, Mr. Roy Mazer, the site would meet all zoning, landscaping, site, access, and stormwater criteria as defined by the LDC. Unfortunately, the property is in disrepair, and a permanent outdoor portable toilet has been added. The questions by the residents in keeping in character with the neighborhood are what are the potential impacts of radio waves that close to the proximity of the residents 24 hours a day. There weren't any documented studies in the package that address that issue. Also, what mechanisms are being implemented to protect against dangers such as hurricanes and lightning with 125-foot tower? Hillsborough County Development Code also adjoins equitable release and enforcement of private property rights that believes that the property, pardon me, specific criteria must be in this history and the real property use, the reasonable expectation of the owner at the time of the acquisition, and public purpose sought to be achieved. As I questioned earlier, most importantly is whether there's an alternate development order or enforcement action that could achieve the public purpose. Lastly, in granting the land use, this will create an opportunity for the residents to file a nuisance claim under the private property rights based on common law. The essence of the claim would be that the property owner acted in a way that interfered or disturbed with the use and enjoyment of the adjacent properties. Should the Board of County Commissioners still decide to grant the application for minor modification, it would imply that the special use would also be granted. Based on best and current actions of the landowner, it would be requested that certain special restrictions be placed on the project. Given that the landowner stands to benefit substantially by creation, creating a new location, provisions be made so that the property be perpetually professionally maintained in an aesthetically pleasing manner, given the location within the community. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here in opposition? All right, this time the applicant, applicant has the opportunity for a five-minute rebuttal.
Commissioner, may I ask that the speaker identify himself?
Perry Goldberg at 12102 Cedar Field Drive. It's the plat adjoining this property that's in question.
Thank you, sir. All right, you have a five-minute rebuttal?
Mr. Goldberg mentions the surrounding residence. The closest residential property is over 258 feet from our site. It is separated by 100-foot right-of-way and 158-foot setback. The mobile home that he refers to is actually a construction trailer that is going to be removed from the property when we start construction. And we do have our agent, Jason Polly, who can discuss the radio frequency, radio waves that was mentioned by Mr. Goldberg. Mr. Polly?
Hello, Jason Polly, Wonder Park, Florida. T-Mobile engineer. T-Mobile complies with all FCC requirements for safety and non-interference. And also, the mention of towers within a mile is incorrect. The closest T-Mobile tower is 1.4 miles away, and all the others are further.
With that, we'd like to request approval of our application.
All right, thank you. Adam, I have one question. Mr. Goldberg indicated that approval of the minor mod would imply that there would be approval for the special use permit. Can you explain that process?
Yes, Commissioner. There are two processes that are currently ongoing. The first is this minor modification. The purpose of this request is to make cell tower a permissible use within the PD. It does not imply or follow that if the minor modification is approved, that the special use permit is approved, and the special use permit is a pending application for a permit to install the tower itself. As part of that special use application, we do have information from the applicant that shows the coverage that they're trying to seek, and we do have an independent expert that the county hires, a third party, to review those materials. Any action on the minor modification would only serve to allow the planned development to consider this a potential use. It does not by any means guarantee or imply approval of the special use permit. There are different standards that are implied for that application, and it is correct that that is a pending permit scheduled to be considered by the land use hearing officer on May 22.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Adam, or perhaps the applicant can answer this. It's described as a concealed clock tower. What does that look like? Do you have a drawing of it or some kind of visual?
Yes, can you guys describe?
Hit this button here. Oh, yeah, we have a description from our drawings right here that show the concealed part is up on the top where the antennas are going to be concealed. It's just a 125-foot structure with four concealment carrier panels that are going to be at the top for the carriers to place their antennas and equipment, whatever they put up there, behind those panels. So you won't actually see the antennas or the equipment from the ground. You will see the tower, obviously, though.
And that's the clock at the top of it?
Correct.
I mean, I can understand why the neighbor would like something a little bit more attractive than that. When you talk about a clock tower, I sort of envisioned some charming clock tower.
Here's, there's a photo sims we have completed that we can also give to everyone put in, but that's from the street adjacent to the tower from the houses. That's what it would look like from a photo sims.
Thanks.
Commissioner Owen?
And that was kind of hitting on what my question was. I think I've seen some of these where they have, like, they almost look like a tree, a wooden tree stump. Like, are there multiple choices you have rather than a clock? I'm just curious to answer the gentleman's question.
Yes, they do have mono pines and mono palms that you can do. I mean, it's just whatever's better for the area. The specific church wanted a bell tower at this location.
Okay, and I was going to ask, what engagement did you do to pick this particular style over the other?
It's just the landlord's preference on this, I believe.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Rostel?
Thank you, Chair. Is there no way to confirm whether or not there was an alternative? I mean, the setback argument, to me, falls short because it's a 125-foot tower, right?
Correct.
Okay, so extremely visible to the surrounding homes. I mean, that's, is there, is there no way to confirm that the comment that was made that there was no reasonable alternative?
Commissioner, we will have that documentation as part of the special use application. I'm wondering if we can access that, but that is something that we, that is one of the criteria for approval of the special use for a new support structure, or new tower, is that there are no reasonable alternatives. We didn't provide that information as part of this application, but it is a necessary finding for the special use, that there are not alternatives.
Okay. Yeah, he was, the opposition was pretty thorough. I would, I would agree, though, that in these situations, a yes to this is implying that the special use would ultimately be there. I mean, so, okay, thank you, Chair.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Owen?
I'm inclined to move for approval on this. Obviously, you know, I just don't know what other type of engagement can be done. I think that the applicant has kind of gone over beyond on this, so I'll move for approval.
Can we get a motion to approve? Commissioner Owen, we have a second. Second, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Cohen voted no.
All right, thank you. And now on the regular part of the agenda, Mr. Grady, let me introduce the first item.
Yes, the next item is agenda item F1, Major Mod Application 22-1126. The request is for a major modification to existing planned development on the south side of US 92. Ostensibly, the request is to modify the layout of approved uses on the project. Michelle Heinrich with county staff will provide a brief overview of the request.
Hi, good morning. Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. And I will put up the last graphic here for you to kind of follow along as I go over the information, if that can be shown up. Okay, so for this request, the applicant seeks to modify PD 151034, and that was most recently modified under Major Mod 17-0762. And as you probably noticed on the aerials, the PD is currently approved for a variety of uses, which would be considered general and intensive commercial uses. And this includes the sales rental and service of domestic vehicles, commercial vehicles, farm and garden equipment, hobby and pleasure crafts, trucks, buses, and RVs, as well as minor major car repair, car bodywork and painting, and vehicle parts sales and open vehicle recycling. As noted, the property is situated on the south side of US 92, which is developed with commercial uses, and there is existing single-family uses to the south and southeast. Therefore, compatibility was a significant factor in our review. So for this request, they are seeking to relocate some usage, which is depicted on the graphic, with the one on the left being the currently approved and the one on the right being the proposed. And this is expanding, you'll see, the open vehicle recycling area to the south and southeast. And with this, the application consists of two PD variation requests. So the proposed layout will remove the sales area, which is now located within the open vehicle recycling area. A office, the square footage for the office will increase, and they are adding an enclosed vehicle parts building. And the vehicle recycling or open vehicle recycling expands to the north, south, and east. The southern setback decreases from between 110 and 180 feet to between 91 and 93 feet. The eastern setback decreases from between 88 to 145 feet to 30 feet. And the proposed screening along these two boundaries is proposed to not be compliant with the LDC. The LDC requires, if you are in view of a roadway or in view of residential properties, that you do provide screening, which would consist of a six-foot-high masonry wall, PVC fence, which can be wooden, or dense shrubbery. And the applicant in both cases is asking to also allow a six-foot-high metal fence, and that would be a solid metal fence, not chain link fence. And staff did receive a finding of inconsistency from the planning commission regarding this request, and Development Services feels the expansion is incompatible with the adjacent residential uses and does not support the PD variations. Therefore, we do not support the request, and I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Was the applicant here?
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you need them to bring it up? I'm sorry? Oh, you got it. No, that's, that's, oh, it's one of the, I see, is that one? Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. Appreciate your attention at time this morning. This is Major Mod 22-16. Is the PowerPoint up for you all? Okay, so we're located, as Michelle indicated, right near the apex of I-75 and I-4. Here's the location here. The issue is a major modification. This site was originally approved in 2015, modified further in 2017, and at both of those times, Development Service, Planning Commission, ZHM, all approved of the site. So this is the site as it looks currently, per the property appraiser. Now, the current long-term approved uses, as Michelle indicated, are very wide and varied and very intensive. The area is very intensive. Basically, this is where all of our old cars go to die, and they process and move them through along with other uses. But per the planning commission report, the proposed uses are the same as approved in 2017. So the issue today is a modification of this longtime major modification. There are no use changes. The changes are site plan or locational and buffer changes. And there's a lot of specific detailed changes, but Michelle and the staff report do have a very good graphic that show you, the red area is an expansion of the vehicle recycling and changes of the sales, office, and parking and buffering. So under the site plan, specifically noting the office, the west setback from 30 feet to 34, 46 feet, which varies, south setback and east setback. Zoning is very intensive in the site. The site is in the middle, purple, manufacturing, commercial intensive, commercial general. PD next door is very intensive, so again, it is a very intensive operational site. Future land use category is UMU 20, which is a very intensive category. CMU 12 is across the street, again, another very intensive category. UMU 20 is for regional, commercial, light industrial, multi-purpose, and the other categories, community retail, commercial, and light industrial. So in regard to buffer changes, the changes are from what is existing, which, as you'll see, a metal fence and the heavy forestation. This is on the south side, and you'll see there's a dirt road on the south. And on the west is another intensive use. I have it at approximately 144 feet with a lot of forestation and a pond in between. This is the east side. Again, you'll see the metal fence and the forestation. All that, again, will remain. But I think what's important is what is acting as buffering now is many times higher, many times more dense than what would be required under the code. So points in support, again, the future land use category is very intensive. CG is partially abutting the site, as you can see on the zoning map here. The site has been there for quite a long time. This is from 1999. This is somewhat recent history as well, and I've showed you some other aerials. Now, staff notes, it's their position, the more attractive type of screening, which required for land development code be provided. And screening shall be provided consists of a six-foot-high masonry wall or PVC fence or wooden fence, evergreen shrubs. At the time of installation, six-foot-high, 75% opacity. So per the photos I showed you, what is existing is many times, as far as we're concerned, is many more times a better buffer than what's required by code. And again, here's another picture of the south, another picture of the east. The east, east again. The east is the longest abutting site, and here's the north from the roadway. And again, from the north. Now, on top of that, there's also a lot of distance between the residential and the use, which includes, from property line to property line, I have it at 70 feet, a 30-foot buffer, a street, and the forestation. In the rear, I have it about 140 feet beyond the stormwater pond, metal fence, forestation. The purpose of the metal fence is that these types of sites are a target for stealing and looking for parts and stealing materials, so the metal fence does act as a better barrier for that type of unfortunate activity. So Planning Commission knows the uses are within the character of the area, as is located on the Prince Lartero roadway, with similar commercial uses along the corridor. Under the Sefner Mango Community Plan, the directions are recognized the commercial character of US 92 and MLK Boulevard within the USA, which, of course, we're doing. So staff reports, not speaking for the staff, but primarily, the staff reports are concerned about compatibility with the nearby neighbors. So we did go out, and we did talk with each neighbor. Actually, the applicant did this, and we do have petitions in support from the many neighbors that are close by and abutting the site, and we did very well. You can see that virtually every abutting, well, not abutting, but neighbor across the street is on record as supporting. That's because the applicant has done a really good job as he has run this business, to be sure the neighbors are happy. Now, these petitions were submitted after the staff reports are done, so staff didn't have a chance to look at this or consider it, although the planning commission, as I've seen in the past, don't weigh these too heavily. I don't mean to speak for them, but that's been my experience. But I will tell you that the ZHM did not refer to this, and in terms of the neighborhood support in her recommendation. So on top of that, 24 people were noticed. I have to tell you, I've noticed this thing, I don't know how many times. It's got to be at least four or five times, plus the big yellow signs, and we've never had anyone come forward in opposition, speak at a hearing, and there's nothing in the record I'm aware of. So with that, we believe that we're providing a really good buffer. It's a use that has been there for a very long time, very responsibly run, and we've been able to present to you very good support from the neighbors who are very closely adjacent. With that, happy answering the questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here in support of the application? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Thank you. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use 20 future land use category. The site is in the urban service area and also located within a limit of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. The urban mixed-use 20 future land use category can be considered for a maximum density of up to 20 dwelling units per gross acre or a maximum intensity of a 1.0 floor area ratio. Development in the UMU future land use category is not subject to commercial locational criteria. This category is located to the east, west, and south of the subject property, and then further north is the community mixed-use 12 future land use category. Future land use element policy 1.4 requires that all new developments be compatible with the surrounding area, noting that compatibility does not mean the same as, rather, it refers to the sensitivity of development proposals in maintaining the character of the existing development. To the south and southeast are residential uses, including single-family and multifamily homes. To the west are warehousing and distribution uses. The similar, I'm sorry, the unit, the uses are within character of the area as it is located on a principal Arterio roadway, and similar commercial uses are also located along this corridor. However, future land use element objective 16 and policy 16.2 indicate a need for neighborhood protection by gradual transition of intensities between different land uses using professional site planning, buffering, and screening techniques, and also controlling specific land uses. The most recent modification to the plan development zoning, which was Major Mod 17-0762, reconfigured the site. With that modification, the applicant enlarged the auto recycling and auto storage area from 0.69 acres to 2.57 acres with greater southern and eastern setbacks. They also enlarged stormwater ponds on the east and southern boundary, creating more distance between the residential uses and the uses on site. The proposed rezoning does not meet the objective, the intent of objective 16 and policy 16.2, as I mentioned, as it reduces the buffer between the auto recycling and auto storage areas and the single-family residential and multifamily residential to the south and to the east. The subject property is located within the Sefner Mango Community Plan, and goal two of this plan indicates a need to enhance the community character, as well as ensure quality residential and non-residential development. The proposed plan development is inconsistent, I'm sorry, is not consistent with the neighborhood protection policies, as I mentioned, as the applicant is proposing to reduce the eastern and southern buffers adjacent to the residential development. The proposed modification for the reduction of buffers is also inconsistent with the vision of the community plan. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed modification inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing master?
The zoning hearing master considering, considered the proposed major modification to the subject property, which consists of approximately 6.68 acres designated UMU 20 on the comprehensive plans future land use map and zoned PD 151034 as previously modified. The property is developed and in use as a vehicle recycling and parts sale operation, which are uses allowed under the current zoning. The applicant requests a major modification to expand the vehicle recycling area on the subject property and the areas on the northeast, south, and east of the property, to move the sales area, to enlarge the office building, to provide an area for enclosed vehicle parts storage, to specify the location of a covered concrete area, eliminate the western buffer, and to specify that screening may consist of a metal fence. Development Services staff found the proposed modification would bring the open vehicle recycling use closer to the single-family residential uses on Old Hillsborough Avenue and McCloutt Drive, and would allow non-compliant screening in the form of the six-foot-high metal fence. The Development Services Department was not supportive. As Ms. Leinhart explained, the Planning Commission staff also found the request to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, noting the request for plan development variations as well as the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, found by the Planning Commission staff. The zoning hearing master recommended denial of the application.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this one kind of pulled the trifecta again, and whenever I see that, I really take a look at it, and I'm somebody that always preaches that gradual transitioning of intensity. The odd thing about this one is the support it has from the surrounding area, which is very interesting. But for me, when I look at the kind of the gradual transition here from the residential to this type of use, even though it looks like they're using it pretty heavily commercial, it just throws up a lot of red flags for me. This is not my district. Commissioner Hagan says this is yours, but I'm inclined not to support this one just because of, just because of not just what Public Works and ZHM says, but because of that gradual transitioning that I've preached here many times. I want to stay consistent with that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. It looks like one of the major things at issue here is just whether it's a chain link fence, as it is, or a wall or something more substantial is by staff, is that, or by Planning Commission? Whoever wants to answer that?
Commissioners, our issue is along the southern-eastern boundary, the applicant is proposing a metal fence, which they indicated in their presentation was existing, so our concern was with atypical fence design along that southern-eastern boundary. I believe on the western boundary, they are proposing a chain link fence, which, again, would also not be consistent with code requirements.
Right, and they're also going to reduce the buffering on that, as you can see. It's a significant reduction in buffering, so what we saw were pictures of what it is now, not necessarily pictures of what it would be. And it may be difficult, actually, they have people signing in support, they're not here, but it may be difficult for them to even conceive of what's different or what's possible. Would they rather, were they, like, you know, could they have a wall or not, or what that would be? I'm concerned because of the fact that there are multifamily and housing here, single-family homes on this southern and eastern border, and to me, it's a not very significant thing if you want to change and expand to do a wall or put something in there. That would be more protective of the families and residents around there. So I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Commissioner Kemp, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. And I'll just say, looking at this, I was on the fence, literally, but I know they're not changing the uses, and they do have support from the neighbors, and I give Mr. Pressman credit for being able to garner support, but again, I'm having difficulty getting past the reduction and the buffer and the screening not being compliant, so I'm going to support the motion to deny. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Well, I was just going to say that you said the owner's been growing his business, you know, with his neighbors in mind. The neighbors did support it. All the surrounding neighbors supported it. And I believe, you said that there are other similar businesses in the area as well?
Yes, ma'am. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff, there are similar uses to the north and to the west. This is a fairly intensive area, but our concern from a compatibility perspective and a comprehensive plan perspective is really those neighbors directly to the east and then to the south, and the buffer reduction that they're proposing.
But you said the neighbors were supporting it, though, right?
Hold on, Mr. Pressman. You haven't been, no?
That's all I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. But you said the neighbors were supporting it, all the neighbors, surrounding neighbors were supporting this?
Every adjacent neighbor is supporting it. We brought written documentation of that. May I add a point? As a correction, we're not reducing the buffer that you saw in the pictures. We want it to remain. The code requirement would call for a lesser planting, where the existing buffer is much higher, thicker, and denser. So I want to make sure the commissioners are well aware. We want to keep what's there because it's a great buffer, and thank you. Ms. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Rostel?
Thank you, Chair. If you look at the diagram on page six, part of the setback in the stormwater, it's actually a big diagonal, and with the reduction, if you look at it from left to right, it's barely moving the needle at all. To the left, it's just making it a straight line all the way across, and for me, I just felt like if this was some change to be packed and stacked apartments, there'd be a different point of view about what's going on, and this is simply an expansion of the business, so I'm going to not support the denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
And just for the record, there, you know, when we saw the diagram in front of us, it had support for some of the adjacent neighbors, but not all of them, just to be clear. It wasn't every resident around the south and the east that were the single family. And so, again, you know, we are reducing the buffer. There was a footprint there that we saw to expand the business and to the north. I'm not as concerned about the north and the east, where it's adjacent to the similar types of businesses, but this is around the other, the south and the east, and not every business, or not every resident there was in support, according to the chart we saw.
Okay, so your motion to deny, Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Owen. No other comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron Cepeda, Cohen Myers, and Rostel voted no.
All right, can we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Myers, second. Commissioner Cohen, no comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Hagan, Kemp, and Owen voted no.
Okay, next item?
The next item is the item F2, is rezoning standard 23-0035. This is a request to rezon a parcel of 5.53 acre, approximate acre parcel on the east side of South Taylor Road. Again, north of Martin Luther King in the Sefner Mango Community Plan area. The request is rezoned from RMC 9 with restrictions to RMC 9 with restriction. The current restriction is a limitation that the applicant The current restriction is a limitation that the applicant during the prior rezoning offered to limit maximum number of units to 36 units. Under the comprehensive plan, future land use category, R E S nine, a maximum of 49 units would be permissible. As part of this request, the applicant is requesting to remove that restriction on the maximum number of units to be able to develop the property with the maximum number of units permitted under the comprehensive plan, which would be 49 units. As part of this, the applicant has offered additional restrictions regarding enhanced landscaping and buffering along the north and west boundary, whereas where there are existing single families, as you can see in this area, all the commercials located the south and east, and similar development is located to the east with residential multifamily duplexes to the east. So, to address the single family in the north and west, the applicant had proposed additional tree plantings along the northern boundary and additional buffering and tree plantings along the western boundary, you know, along the western boundary, ornamental trees and clusters of three on 30-foot centers, which is again in excess of code requirements, and along the northern boundary, additional 10 oak trees, whereas no trees would be required to be planted. Along the northern boundary, we just required a six-foot solid fence or wall. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission found it consistent, Hearing Officer also recommended approval, and staff's available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Advocate here? Is the applicant not present?
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South in St. Petersburg, Florida. This request is very specific. The current zoning is R M C nine. We're still requesting R M C nine, but in 2013, a condition was placed to limit the number of units to 36. All we're asking today is for that condition to be lifted. All the buffering, extra buffering, and all the other conditions remain the same. In 2013, there was a large amount of opposition. Looking at the record, there were 13 to 14 separate entries into the record in opposition from local neighbors. In this circumstance, we've noticed 28 people, big yellow signs, and only one nice lady was at the Board of County Commissioners. So, we feel that timing after 10 years is good and correct. Zoning staff, Planning Commission supports the request. So, this would be a change of from 36 to 49 units. Now, in terms of transportation, there would be six additional P M trips, seven additional P M trips, and the Transportation Department has no opposition or concerns about the request. So, in summary, zoning remains the same, seeking to change the one condition upon which in the past was very opposed, and in this circumstance, just one individual is here. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Anyone here in support of the application? Anyone in opposition?
My name's Grace McComas. I live at 805. I'm sorry.
Speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. My name's Grace McComas. I live at 805 Old Darby Street. I do not live on Taylor Road. However, the facts of my opposition and your decision affects all the similar properties and neighbors and neighborhoods in all Hillsborough County unincorporated areas. I am here to try to protect anything in Sefner that is unreasonable in an area. I know the planning and development, the Z H M, I believe they've all stated that it was approvable, but your board has the power to make your own decision. As Mr. Pressman stated at the zoning hearing master, I am the only opponent because people formerly involved in this, as most of the concerned citizens in Sefner, have been unsuccessful in their attempts to keep Sefner suburban, rural in nature, keep the numerous large incompatible subdivisions, pop-up car lots, and commercial metal buildings out of Sefner. They have found they have had little support from the previous Port of County Commissioners during the 13 years since our community plan was written in 2010, and they feel that it is a waste of time and energy to oppose anything. The zoning hearing master in 2013 recommended denial of the R S C nine zoning, and the conditions of the 36 homes were placed and approved by the B O C C. Nothing in this neighborhood has changed since then. My opposition is to allowing the removal of the condition and making a bad situation for this neighborhood worse. The owners have a zoning already for 36 homes. I do know we cannot take that away, unfortunately. At that 2013 hearing, residents from the area poured their hearts out to save Taylor Road. It is still one of the prettiest, tranquil neighborhoods in Sefner. The homes are on very large lots, well set back from the two-lane, substandard road with no sidewalks, no curbs, no drainage, no lighting, and it is suburban, almost rural in its nature. Although ownership of some of the properties have changed, they continue to maintain the pride and character of Taylor Road. Their arguments were the increased traffic, even with the restriction of 32 homes, increased drainage, and persistent flooding to the neighboring homes, no signalization at either Taylor or Martin Luther King Boulevard or Taylor and Highway 92, an increase in density that is not compatible, consistent, or transitional with the neighborhood appearance. There were more, and I have submitted the testimony of Crystal Booth from that hearing at the zoning hearing master. She represented the 50 people that wrote and signed in opposition, and I include all of those concerns as part of my opposition. Her statements are as valid now as they were in 2013, and all the facts and concerns of the residents remain the same today. Unfortunately, they were unsuccessful getting the whole project denied that year. I know the traffic concerns on Highway 92 for this neighborhood and the heavy traffic with the Amazon trucks, I've counted as many as 42 trucks, it was said 72, it was a typo in the transcript, coming out of the warehouse in one stream at Taylor Road because there is no signalization on 92 at that intersection. The unfortunate and all-too often need to use 92 for detours due to the I four incidents, accidents, and whatever. Similar heavy traffic problems exist for trying to access Martin Luther King, which is only a westbound exit. There are two family homes and duplexes across this planned site, as Mr. Pressman had stated in his Z M H report, but they are one duplex on each of two large lots and separated by Robson Road, a dirt road, and those two lots are the smallest lots on Taylor Road and Robson Road both, but still maintain the appearance and character of the neighborhood. The property adjacent on the north is a very large, one-acre lot with one home on the property. Yes, it has a larger F L U, but they are not that now. And we have a map to kind of. You can see the commercial on the bottom, the area that is the site of this application, and the lottery.
Excuse me, Ms. McComas, was that part of the land use Hearing Officer, Z H M presentation that you made?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so, because I still had it in my packet. I'll take it away, but in the during the zoning hearing master, all these things were presented by staff, and this was one of their things they included. But I'll take it away. In any event, the it still stands to my opposition, and I'm going to do it in words. The property to the northeast, not the north of, as it stated in the zoning hearing master, this site is R D C 12. It has two-story duplexes, however, the big difference is their exit is on Parsons Avenue, a much better, improved road with sidewalks, curbs, drainage, lighting, and signalization at the north on at 92, and to the south at Martin Luther King, which also has the same connecting arterial roads for this application with none of the improvements or signalization. That R D C 12 existing property has a stubout, which was on the picture that Mr. Pressman showed, for Dab Road, Dab Drive. On the west property line of its property, my concern is there is no condition to ensure Dab Drive will never be connected to or through this property to Taylor Road. I know the rule states, if the project is developed with private roads, no connection is required, but no connection is prohibited either. For the sake of the Taylor Roads, I hope it's possible for you to all this to add this condition of approval to the approved 36 homes. The 49 homes would be far more inconsistent, incompatible, and nontransitional than the 36 homes still are now 10 years later. It is unfortunate that you cannot actually see this neighborhood. I think some of the commissioners know this this block because we've had plenty of previous rezonings on it that they did not approve. The approved 36 homes will have we have to live with, but not an increased density. Just because a property has a future land use designation does not mean it has to be used at that designation, especially in the neighborhood that would not be consistent with, like Taylor Road, and will set a precedent to eventually allow more same nontransitional zonings. I don't understand how commercial to R nine to R one is compatible, consistent, and transitional. I don't get it. I thought the rights to maintain the lifestyle of existing residents were considered important to our county. Commissioners ran on campaign promise. And just because it looks right on paper and meets the F L U does not mean it is right to allow this increased zoning in this neighborhood. If they are ready to build, they have the right now to build 36 homes. Crystal Booth gave her all to try and save this neighborhood unsuccessfully. Fortunately, at almost 10 years later, nothing has been constructed. There's no valid reason for an increase in density now, and it would be even more inconsistent, incompatible, and definitely not transitional. The reason for the Z M H to recommend for denial of R S C nine in 2013 and approved by the B O C C as the same is are the same today. The area and the problems and concerns have not changed one bit since then. Please vote for denial of this increase or, as stated, the removal of the condition to limit to 36 homes they have gotten permission for, and add the Dab Drive restriction as a condition for the Taylor Road residents' safety. Thank you for hearing my concerns and opposition. You have the power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McComas. Mr. Pressman, you have a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman and Commissioners. So, you had before you approval of all reviewers, all agencies, all departments. The Planning Commission, I think one particular point that they make is that the subject site is vacant and is located between industrial and commercial uses and single family. So, the proposed rezoning would allow for consideration of this residential development, which would be a great, in my words, a great transition between the two. But I do want to place emphasis that the young lady who spoke, she did indicate she is about two miles away, and we have not heard from a single resident that was noticed or in the immediate vicinity. There's nothing on the record, when I last looked, of anyone in opposition from the immediate neighborhood of any regard, which is light-years difference from 10 years ago. So, again, we believe the timing is correct. This is really a small increase in terms of the scheme of things, but again, has well support from the county reviewers. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and the Commissioners.
Planning Commission?
Thank you for the record, Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the residential nine future land use category. It is in the urban service area and located within the limits of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. Future land use element policy 1.2 states that within the urban service area and in categories allowing four dwelling units per acre greater, new development or redevelopment shall occur at a density of at least 75% of the allowable density of the land use category. Removing the current restriction of 36 dwelling units on the subject site would allow for consideration of density that is at least 75% of the allowable density within the site's residential nine future land use and is therefore consistent with the minimum density policy direction. The proposed rezoning meets the intent of neighborhood protection policies of the future land use element listed under Objective 16. The proposed rezoning would allow for consideration of a density increase that would be in line with the surrounding development pattern, which includes residential development. The rezoning would allow for development of like uses while incorporating a density increase that is appropriate for the subject site and the surrounding area. Additionally, the applicant has offered the previously approved restrictions from rezoning 13-0695 as restrictions for this rezoning. These restrictions include buffering along the northern property line and along South Taylor Road. Goal two of the Sefner Mango Community Plan seeks to enhance community character and ensure the quality of residential and nonresidential development. One of the key strategies of this goal is to support infill development and redevelopment within the urban service area while providing for compatibility with the existing uses. The subject site is currently vacant and located between industrial and commercial uses to the south and residential uses to the north and east. The proposed rezoning would allow for consideration of residential development that is consistent and encouraged by the goals and strategies of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the restrictions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject property consisting of approximately 5.53 acres of undeveloped land at 1406 South Taylor Road in Sefner. The property is designated residential nine on the future land use map and zoned R M C nine restricted under rezoning case 13-695, which provided buffering and screening restrictions and allowed for the development on the property with a maximum of 36 dwelling units. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to remove the restriction for a maximum of 36 dwelling units. The proposed R M C nine restricted zoning will allow development of the subject property with up to 49 dwelling units. The applicant is not requesting to remove the buffering and screening restrictions imposed under rezoning case 2013-695. These restrictions will be maintained. The zoning hearing master noted that the surrounding area consists of single-family and two-family residential and commercial uses. The area to the north of the property is owned for two-family and multifamily residential uses. Adjacent parcels include a property zoned R D C six to the north, parcel zone, planned development and developed with a self-storage facility, pet grooming business, and a credit union to the south, South Taylor Road, and residential properties zoned R D C six to the west, and the shopping center properties zoned Commercial General and residential properties zoned R D C 12 to the east. The zoning hearing master recommended approval of the proposed rezoning to R M C nine, subject to the restrictions that are proposed by the applicant.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, this is a good project. This is a good infill project, something that coming before me for a first time, I'd approve. I agree with with the Z H M Development Services and Planning. You know, Ms. McComas, I appreciate you being here today. It's never a waste of time for you to be here. Ms. McComas is highly engaged in her community. She's a patriot and somebody that I really admire. My issue with this is this is the third time this has happened since I've been here, that a developer dangles a carrot of something that they're offering up, which I think impacts the public, okay? And I'm not accusing this developer of playing a bait-and-switch game, but to me, it's a bit frustrating when I see development offer up something to the public which may take away engagement from the community, and then later on, as this project has moved along, say, we want to go back to what the original entitlements we could get. It's frustrating to me and something I just hope us Commissioners are just kind of taking note note of. You know, I'm going to move for approval on this, but again, I really want us as a board and Commissioners and everybody, staff, to take note that whenever these developers are making up some type of offer that's more like a carrot, that maybe they should be that should be a requirement that they're held accountable for it. But but this is a good project, it's a good infill project. But, but this is a good project, it's a good infill project, and I'm going to move for approval. Thank you.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Myers or Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Pressman, could I ask you one question? So this was a huge fight. Is it the same developer from 10 years ago that got the entitlement?
I'm really not 100% sure. I, I can't answer the question with 100% certainty. I did handle it 10 years ago, but I, I can't answer that with certainty.
You, you have me at a weird spot today. I, I supported you on the one that was found inconsistent, and I'm going to oppose you on the one that is found consistent. I do believe that it's a good project, but my, my concern is exactly what was stated is that the community 10 years ago got beat down fighting this, and then it got entitled to a certain amount of homes, 36 units. 10 years later, of course, they're not going to have the same energy and motivation to rally here and oppose it. It's not a small increase, in my opinion. It's 140% of what is currently allotted. And I, I do, I find it frustrating that these old rezones, that they've already had a battle, they've already been entitled, the community thinks it's a done deal, and then lo and behold, here we are again, and we're going to make it even worse. So for all of those reasons, I, I would normally support it, right place, right time, but on this specific one, since it's kind of a redo of a decades past, I'm going to be voting now opposing this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. And I just, Ms. McComas, thank you for your diligence and coming down here and really just educating each generation of board members about your community and the history of that community and the history of individual requests that are made, rezonings and modifications here. I, I will, I think it's very frustrating, too. I can see why you don't have a huge number of people here because, you know, over and over again, I mean, there was obviously a very epic hearing in the past where people came down here. It's not easy to come down here like Ms. McComas did this morning. That is not an easy thing for a community to just be taking this role as well as all the other roles that they have in their lives, caring for their families, working, everything else, and then to come engaged in the community and then to what I think at that time was pretty much seen as a loss rather than a win. But it was done with some specific conditions. And I will just, you know, once those promises are made, I, you know, this is just the whole thing that's done. Just wait it out. Do another decade. You know, they can play the, the long run, and it doesn't matter whether it was the same developer-owner or not, then, you know, they can flip the land right after this when they have the higher density. I just think that this was done with a huge amount of engagement. It is 36 homes, so that's not any small amount to put in here. As Commissioner Wostel said, this is 140% increase, and what we're talking about here is five and a half acres, going from 36, or I'm sorry, 30, is it, 36 to 49 units, you know? But I think, you know, we had, we had the past project, it had communities, you know, it was brought, it was, you know, something that the community got engaged in and made sure that it was something that they, you know, could be engaged in, and, and I can see why they wouldn't be here now for this, but I'm going to support, I'm not going to support moving this forward. I think they have a project here that they can work on at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
You know, I'm very sympathetic to the argument that Commissioners Wostel and Kemp just made, but I'm, I'm reminded of the fact that in the last decade, the county has changed so dramatically and our housing needs have changed so dramatically that I think that when you have opportunities like this within the urban service area that have recommendations of approval, it's, it's very difficult to deny them. Notwithstanding, notwithstanding the points that have been brought up, the, the need for housing is, is a constant, a constant stress on the community. And again, you know, we try to keep it out of the rural service area, we try to keep it out of the coastal high-hazard area. You know, it, at some point, it, the growth has got to go somewhere, and there are criteria that we follow in order to decide where to put it. And I agree with the maker of the motion that, that I think that this is appropriate.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, so I cannot support this as well for the same reasons that the other commissioners had in opposition as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and this is one of those strange ones. Commissioners, I think we're all right. It's just one of those odd outliers. I just, I look back on, on some of the approvals we've already done, which were not similar to this increased development, but we've had situations where a developer has promised to improve or fix a road, and they made that promise up front and then came back, and we went ahead and voted and allowed it. So I, I just don't want to be inconsistent with, with, with my pattern, but I just, I'm, you know, I'm, obviously, I made the motion, but I just want to say to all the commissioners, I completely understand your positions, and I, it's one of those strange ones where I think everybody's kind of right on this one. So thank you.
All right. Motion approved, Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cameron Cepeda, Kemp, and Wostel voted no.
All right, thank you. F3.
Commissioners, next item is agenda item F3, rezoning standard 23-0063. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.93 acre parcel that's located on the north side of Main Street in the Thonona Sasa area. As you can see here, it's east of County Road 579 and west of Taylor Road. The request is to rezone from, the parcel is split zoning, so the request is to rezone from CN and RSC 6 with mobile home overlay to CG with restrictions. As I notice, you can see on this area, all the parts, the front half of the property is zoned commercial neighborhood, and the back half is zoned RSC 6 MH. As you'll see on the agenda, this does have a split recommendation with our department in support and Planning Commission finding it inconsistent, and the hearing officer recommending not support. From Development Services' perspective, from compatibility's perspective, given the surrounding land uses to the immediate east and west, which are non-residential, and that's similar situated, CG zonings to the east and west are also located adjacent to existing residential, and with restrictions offered by the applicant regarding, they did offer some use restrictions and also enhanced setbacks and additional screening along the adjacent to the, their single-family zoning districts. Based on those, staff felt it was compatible, and we did recommend approval. But again, I will note, the Planning Commission did find it inconsistent, and the hearing officer recommended denial, and we're abel for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Applicant here?
For the record, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451, St. Petersburg, Florida. This is rezoning 23-0063. I'd like to introduce Mr. Agul. This is Mr. Agul's property, him and his family's property, being presented to you. As Brian said, we have modified this application. Zoning staff put forward some pretty significant changes, and we wanted to always try and meet whatever conditions or directions we can. So we did move forward and change the application to meet those requirements that Mr. Grady reviewed, and zoning staff is supporting this request. So we are located in the Thonona Sasa area. You can see Lake Thonona Sasa is a landmark. This is as the property appraiser has it on Main Street in Thonona Sasa. The issue is rezoning from CN to CGR. Restrictions include a 35-foot landscape buffer along the north, type B. Evergreens planted every 10 feet versus every 20 feet. We wanted to do a better buffer to the residential to the north. We have restricted a lot of intensive uses, which would include restrictions of car washes, seltzer laundry, blood plasma donations, emergency rooms, recreation, outdoor, ambulance, recycle recovery. And it was critical to us to restrict uses that are familiar for zoning on the east and west, as Mr. Grady indicated. So per the property, this would be approximately the 35-foot buffer, which the forest station would be left in place, which would be a really good buffer, which far, far, far exceeds what the county would typically require. On the future land use map, we are, we are R6, which is residential suburban, suburban commercial offices, multipurpose, mixed use. This is zoning in the area. You can see the CG does tend to be the primary zoning category along Main Street, and you can see the site in purple there. In terms of specific uses, there's a WellMed next door, public utility on the other side, car lot repair, strip center. Across the street is a welding fabrication site and a library. So you can see the uses do tend to be or include some intensive uses. So this is the fabrication, a welding site directly across the street. This is the WellMed next door, the public service facility on the other side, and then the car lot, which is a few lots down the street. So Planning Commission notes that the CGR would still foster compatibility conflicts with the single-family residential uses that are directly northwest. But we feel, and zoning has indicated, that what we've changed to in terms of restrictions and buffering, that changed their position to support and do support the request and the intensity. The zoning staff, again, in the report to address compatibility, the applicant has proposed the following uses to be prohibited with the site, and they had setbacks and screening. I won't read through those again, but with the proposed restrictions per zoning, staff finds the proposed zoning is consistent and compatible with the existing zoning and development pattern along Thonona Sasa Main Street and with the residential uses and zoning districts in the area. Planning Commission notes that policy 16.5, higher-intensity non-residential land uses that are adjacent to neighborhoods shall be restricted to collectors, collectors and arterials, which we are. They note although the proposed rezoning resembles similar development patterns, as zoning department has recognized, directly west into the south of the subject site, they could not support. But they presented in their report noting a resemblance of those categories. And Planning Commission staff recognized policy 9.1.3 encourages new commercial zoning to locate activity centers such as the Main Street corridor in Thonona Sasa, which we are. We've had zero opposition. No one spoken from Volplubak, and last I checked in the record, there is no email or letters. We did notice 28 people, and this would be predominantly well-aware. A big yellow sign on Thonona, on Main Road, Thonona Sasa could not be missed. So with that, again, we've made significant changes to meet up with zoning. We've had no opposition, and Akil, Cahill, and I hope to have your consideration and support. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone here in support of the application? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Thank you for the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the residential six future land use category. It is in the rural area and also located within the limits of the Thonona Sasa Community Plan. The subject site is located in the rural area where, according to Objective Four of the future land use element, rural residential uses can exist without the threat of urban or suburban encroachment. The proposed request is inconsistent with this policy direction, as the proposed rezoning would allow for commercial encroachment into the single-family residential uses that are located directly north of the subject site. The proposed rezoning does not meet the intent of future land use element Objective 16 and its accompanying policies as related to neighborhood protection. Although the applicant has proposed a 35-foot landscape buffer on the north side of the parcel, the proposed rezoning to Commercial General restricted would still foster compatibility conflicts with the single-family residential uses that are located directly north of the subject site. The restricted uses would still allow for a range of activities that would not allow for a gradual transition of intensity between the subject site and the parcels to the north and northwest. The current zoning pattern on the subject site provides adequate transition of intensity. It mitigates potential adverse effects from the commercial neighborhood zoning on the south end of the site with the existing residential single-family conventional six zoning on the north side of the site. Future land use element policy 16.5 asserts that higher-intensity non-residential land uses that are adjacent to established neighborhoods shall be restricted to collectors and arterials and to locations that are external to established and developing neighborhoods. Although Main Street is a collector roadway, the proposed rezoning conflicts with this policy direction because it would infringe on the established neighborhood that is located directly north of the site. It is inconsistent with the aforementioned neighborhood protection objective and policies. The subject site does not meet commercial locational criteria as defined in future land use Objective 22 and its modifying policies. The nearest qualifying intersection is identified at Main Street and Fort King Highway. This intersection is located approximately 1,700 linear feet away from the subject property, which is greater than the 900-feet distance as required per the policy direction. The applicant has requested a waiver to commercial locational criteria as permitted by policy 22.8. Planning Commission staff has reviewed the waiver request and finds the request inconsistent for several reasons. Commercial general uses are subject to commercial locational criteria regardless of the applicant's interpretation of the intended uses and benefits. The locational criteria, as outlined, are not the only factors to be considered for approval for a commercial use. The waiver request is contradictory to policy 22.7 of the future land use element, which requires that neighborhood commercial activities be compatible with the surrounding and existing and planned residential developments. Although the proposed rezoning resembles similar development patterns directly west and south of the subject site, the allowable range of commercial general uses outside the scope of the applicant's restrictions would conflict with the northwestern and northern parcels that contain single-family residential homes. With the existing zoning of the parcel, the zoning pattern on the subject site allows for neighborhood-serving commercial uses on the southern end of the parcel while ensuring residential compatibility on the northern end of the parcel. Allowing the entire parcel to be rezoned as a more intensive Commercial General zoning district would conflict with the aforementioned objective and policies. Therefore, Planning Commission staff recommends that the board not grant the waiver to commercial locational criteria. The Thonona Sasa Community Plan establishes guidance on new developments and commercial activities throughout the community. Goal two of this community plan encourages new developments that maintain and enhance Thonona Sasa's unique character and sense of place. The range of allowable uses outside the applicant's list of restricted uses would conflict with this goal, as they would be out of character with Thonona Sasa's single-family homes in the area. The community plan also seeks to designate Main Street as a central gathering place and a focal point of commercial and community activities. The current zoning pattern on the site meets the intent of this policy direction on a scale that is appropriate for the overall character of the roadway and the community. A rezoning to Commercial General for the entire site would allow for a range of uses that would conflict with this goal and is therefore inconsistent with the vision of the Thonona Sasa Community Plan. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed rezoning inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Community Plan, I'm sorry, Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request to rezone the subject property, which consists of 1.94 acres of undeveloped, undeveloped land on the north side of Main Street at the intersection of Flint Avenue and Thonona Sasa. The property is currently zoned commercial neighborhood, and the applicant is proposing a rezoning to Commercial General restricted to allow development limited to retail uses and personal services and freestanding buildings or small shopping centers to serve residential neighborhoods on lots containing a minimum of 7,000 square feet. The applicant has proposed restrictions to certain commercial uses and has proposed additional screening and setbacks along the northern property line and other property lines that abut properties zoned RSC 6, mobile home. As the board has heard from Ms. Leinhart, Planning Commission staff has found the request to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning hearing master noted that the property does not meet commercial locational criteria, therefore, the applicant has requested a waiver. criteria, therefore the applicant has requested a waiver. The applicant has proposed that certain uses will be prohibited on the property to address compatibility concerns. Proposed prohibited uses include car wash, self-serve laundry, major vehicle repair, blood or plasma donation, freestanding emergency room, recreation uses, outdoor ambulance service, and recyclable recovery facility. The applicant has also proposed minimum setbacks of 35 feet and screening in the form of additional tree plantings within the required buffers adjacent to the RSC six mobile home zoned properties along the north property line. The zoning hearing master considered the evidence and testimony submitted in the record and at the hearing. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended denial.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gormly, you know, I look at this and I see commercial everywhere. They said to the west and south is commercial. Isn't there a commercial to the east? Or if you could pull that map up, or am I missing something?
Pull that map up.
Commissioners, there is commercial to the east also.
So we've got commercial on three sides, and then the residential is to the north. And I guess I'm trying to wrap my mind around the community plan, which says Main Street should be commercial unless maybe this particular use, maybe I was planning, is this particular use not consistent with that?
Sure. I think the issue here for Planning Commission staff when looking in the community plan language is the depth of the use that's proposed. So not only is the northern portion currently RSC six, which is for single-family development, they're asking to, and the southern half is CN, so commercial neighborhood, they're asking for the entire parcel to be commercial general restricted. And so by going that deep and not matching the current zoning line, because there is current zoning on the eastern side, most of the zoning that you see on either side has been limited toward the southern part of the parcels to be in line closer to Main Street. So as you go further, closer to the single-family homes, there's the compatibility.
Because the lot is deeper than the CGs to the east, west, and south. I see. Okay. So, okay. What is the intended use, Mr. Pressman, on this property?
It's a CG use, but not including the 35 feet to the north. We're restricting that as a buffer.
Okay.
So it is a 35-foot buffer on the north with sensitive to the residential, and the uses would be commercial general, restricting all those intensive uses that we listed. So inappropriate uses like car washes, I can read the list again. I think there's about 12 or 15 uses we specifically restricted to meet zoning department's concerns.
Okay.
So in regard to Ms. Leinhart's comment, why you would be rezoning the whole parcel, there would be a specific restriction for a buffer for 35 foot.
To that north end?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm inclined to support it, but I'll sit back and listen to some other commissioners.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes. Can you read that list again?
I'd just like to clarify something. The applicant today has committed to having a 35-foot buffer on the north. The way it was originally configured, it was a 35-foot setback with a 20-foot buffer on the north. So if the board is inclined to approve this, we will reflect the amended restrictions. So it's a buffer. The difference meaning setbacks are the distance within which structures can't be located. A buffer is a distance in which nothing can be located. So they can't have parking or drive-bys or things of that nature. So just clarification for the record.
And that is our intent. To answer the question, in the staff report notes prohibited uses would be car wash, self-service laundry, major vehicle repair, blood plasma donation, freestanding emergency room, recreation uses, outdoor ambulance service, recyclable recovery facility.
Well, it's good to get the clarification, but in terms of the buffer and also in terms of these uses, but I, I mean, right to the east and west, is this, Ms. Leinhart, does it, it looks like it has neighborhood commercial.
Do you mean existing land use or the zoning pattern?
Well, why don't you tell me both? That's true. Why don't you just speak to both of them?
So what I'm seeing is the existing land use directly to the west, kind of the southwest doesn't go all the way as far deep as this parcel, is like commercial, according to the property appraiser, which is the map that you typically see. And then to the east is some sort of public utility. And then from a zoning perspective, Adam and Brian are probably more of the experts on that. We do get our data from them as well, but it looks to me that there is CN to the southwest of the property that has a similar zoning pattern as this parcel, as in they have RSC six on the north and they have CN on the south. And then further west, there's commercial general. And then directly to the east, the zoning is RSC six, like this subject property has on the northern side. I would ask Mr. Grady or Mr. Gormly to confirm that, though.
Yes, Commissioners, this graphic shows the zoning, again, immediately to the west, it splits on CN along the Main Street with some RSC six MH to the north, the adjacent parcel to the west. And then further west is CG with restrictions. The immediate parcel to the east is owned by TECO and is developed with utility use, but it is zoned RSC six MH. I misspoke earlier when Commissioner Owen asked about property. I was referring to the further to the east. You can see there's a commercial zone, general zone property further to the east. But again, that immediate parcel of the east is RSC six with a mobile home overlay, but is owned by TECO and developed with the utility.
And can someone speak to the difference between commercial general and commercial neighborhood?
Generally, commercial general, a lot of the uses are similar. Commercial general allows for a more intensive motor vehicle repair, which was restricted as part of his use restrictions. Another use that would be permitted within the CG would be motor vehicle sales, which are currently would not be allowed in CN. I mean, those are probably the two of the more major ones that would be allowable in CG that would not be allowed within CN. But a lot of the similar higher traffic, like fast food restaurants, convenience stores, gas stations would be allowed in both CN and CG.
And Ms. Leinhart, I mean, it looks like with this Main Street and everything, that it's kind of, the vision put forth for this is residential and neighborhood commercial as an endpoint and how it's developed for the future and what the zone, you know, what it's zoned for now.
So the community plan for Thonona Sasa doesn't necessarily drill down to the specific uses that they'd like to see on Main Street. They just talk about community gathering spaces, focal points, places where people can come together and, you know, be together, exchange goods and services, whatever it is, but there's no specific uses listed in that.
Thank you. I, it just, you know, to me, the zoning as it stands now, I'm really comfortable with commercial neighborhood rather than commercial general. It's allowing for residential in that deep area. I would not be supportive of changing that.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I'm going to move for approval, but with specific language as to that 35-foot buffer. So how would you do, if it gets approved, not saying it will, but how would that work?
Commissioner, I think the comments placed on the record will be clear that we can, if this is approved, we understand it will change the restriction based on the applicant's request and agreement to that here today to make that a 35-foot buffer rather than a setback.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'll move for approval based on that.
We've got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wollstel?
Yeah, I'm going to support the approval. Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Supporting it with the buffer, yes.
All right. Sounds good. We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Cohen. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We have one last item, J1. I believe Cameron Clark's going to introduce this item. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioners, next item is J1 regarding rezoning. Excuse me. Again, the next item is J1 concerning rezoning PD 22-1265 pursuant to Madam E. Tampa Bay Searce LLC et al. versus Hillsborough County. And again, Cameron Clark will speak to this item.
Good morning, Mr. Clark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. I can be brief with this introduction, as I know the members are generally familiar with this application. Brief bit of background is this item came before the board in April of '21. It had recommendations of approval from the zoning hearing master, was found approvable by staff, and it was finding of consistency from the planning commission. The board in April of '21 voted to deny this application by a vote of four to three. Subsequently, the applicant filed suit in Circuit Court, a five-count complaint. The county prevailed on four of those five counts. However, the court did quash the board's original rezoning denial. The court found that there was compensational evidence in the record to support an approval of the application and that the record lacked compensational evidence to support a denial of the application. Therefore, based on the order of the court, we're recommending approval of this application. Likewise, staff, planning commission, and zoning hearing master recommendations are unchanged from two years ago. There's not a reconsideration by those entities of this item, just based on the court order. So effectively, what this does is it sort of rewinds the clock and puts this item back before the board as it existed when it was originally denied, but with the court order in place. So I'll stand for questions.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the explanation. I'd like to throw out, just as a practitioner, and I've read all the pleadings going way, way back, and if you could confirm, so whatever decisions that we make today will not negatively impact any litigation. You know, you worry about attorney's fees and costs and things with pending litigation. And again, I don't want you to get into the weeds on that, but we have confirmed that whatever decisions we make today will not impact the county negatively in litigation.
That's correct. Commissioner Owen, in fact, the way the rezoning application works is the direction is this item should be considered separately of anything else in litigation. As this is a quasi-judicial process, the board acts effectively as a judge on this application. So any disposition of any appeal to the other counts where the county prevailed would not be affected by any of this. In fact, it couldn't be negotiated that way because that would be an illegal contract zoning. So effectively, the board is, in its review today, is limited to this application and doesn't need to consider anything else.
Very good. Okay. Commissioners, this is, in my district, this is the northern part of RP2. So to give you some perspective, it's my backyard. The Bell Shoals runs into this, which is an improved road. It's been being improved for many, many years, but we are getting really, really close. The northern part of the RP2 really, to me, is an extension of Fish Hawk. It is suburban in nature, and the Riverview Community Plan, I think, kind of guides us on this, which on page 85 states that it's rapidly suburban in nature. And that is kind of exactly what this community is. I'm not saying there's not challenges as to roads. Boyett is a challenge. I drive it every day. Fortunately, it is not a stem of Lithia Pinecrest Road, but Bell Shoals, which is a highly improved road, which I hope one day is for Lithia Pinecrest. I've watched the ZHM's. I've watched exhaustively the prior meetings, and it seems to me that a lot of the hiccup with this, besides just throwing general sprawl out there and things that really don't have any legal basis of denial, I guess the buffering situation, the buffering issues, Mr. Gormly, on this project, you know, how has that been addressed? How is that different? I want to make sure we do have agriculture to one portion of the RP2 in the northern part, correct? There is some agriculture use?
There may be agriculture use. I know the property to the north is actually an RP2 development.
Right.
Under development. For the screening of the project, what's proposed is a screen around 65% of the project, and that is 65% pending, 65% while a existing single-family home stays on site, and at such time as that.
Has to go to 70.
It goes to 70. Yes, sir.
Okay. So is the buffer itself from the agriculture? If I, I thought I was, I thought I had heard that there's a 50-foot buffer between this RP2 and some agriculture property, and that was, that was one of the concerns, I think, that came up quite a bit in the April 13 meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Or does that not sound right?
Could we put up the graphic showing the buffer?
Because we got a radio tower, I think, within proximity, a BMX bike. So I just want to make sure, I want to make sure, because that seemed to be one of the big issues, was the buffering from some of the prior commissioners.
From familiarizing myself with this again, there is buffering and screening located right here in the yellow. I would have to check the staff report. I believe that may be a 50-foot wide buffer.
That's what I think it is.
Yeah, I can double-check on the staff report, and the yellow is along the north, a segment along the west, and there is another buffering along the south, and then against the roadway.
And then, Mr. Gormly, the, I know that there's an issue as to runoff with this project, I think, that some of the prior commissioners had. All that seems to have been addressed, though, correct?
Any runoff, stormwater that's associated with this project, if it's approved, it will be required to be designed and permitted by both the county and SWIFTMUD to not increase the post-development rate of discharge of stormwater. There'll also be a requirement to retain water on-site for treatment purposes before it's discharged, and that will be part of the county's permitting as well as SWIFTMUD's permitting if it's approved.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I look at this and I tend to agree with my predecessor on this one, Commissioner White, that, you know, this is consistent with the Riverview Community Plan, and again, is an extension of Fish Hawk on an improved road, which is Bell Shoals Road. So I know some other commissioners are going to have a lot to say about this, but again, if, you know, we're talking about having, trust me, I would rather this project personally not exist because it impacts me for traffic. But if we are stating that we have to put people somewhere, which I'm not a big proponent of, but these are the type of communities, I mean, you have Hawkstone out there and Fish Hawk Ranch, and you have a roundabout that they've built out there that is extremely functional. Are there still challenges to the road? Absolutely, there are. But to me, this makes sense, and so I'm going to move for approval on it. I know some commissioners have more to say, but I'm going to move for approval. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to address this a little. We've been very successful in our, when we've been challenged in court generally for the decisions that we made here in Hillsborough County. I know this is just a different kind of posture on this, and one, some of the things I was concerned about when I went through what we were facing here, at the original hearing, there was, you know, raised about school capacity, but that was talked about at that time. As well, I think water was a big challenge at the time and a big consideration, and I had, you know, I was concerned that we put the same water restrictions that we have been.
have been, contingents that we have been adding to since this time, after this time, that we had been putting into other developments. And I talked to Mr. Gormly about this, and just for the record, can you just address what we've been doing since then and where we are now?
Yes, ma'am. In response to some of the concerns about the water pressure, particularly south of the Alephaya, there were zoning conditions that were added as a matter of course to development that was south of the Alephaya that restricted the issuance of building permits until the completion of two capital improvement projects. Both of those projects, one of them is an inline pressure booster and the other is a downstream reservoir. Both of those projects, we have confirmed, are completed and are in operation, and we're no longer requiring or needing to have that condition put in. And we have been coordinating with Water Resources to ensure that we are addressing this properly. But the short version is those conditions that we were putting, the requirements of them have been satisfied, and the CIP projects are completed and currently in operation.
Okay, thank you. Because I was very concerned that we might have to, or I would look to add those conditions in if I hadn't gotten this new information. I do understand that a lot of the, and I read through the discussion again and the judge's decision, a lot of it focused on buffer. So I can see why buffering, why that was one of the main topics that you raised. But there are other topics that were done at the time, and maybe you could, you'd be concerned about these also in terms of, I know that you're out in that area. The local roads there are substandard. There's no, and I'm taking this from the transcript of that time, that where we were going with that. There's no connectivity, no real connectivity being proposed from this development to the area. There's only one primary access point to serve 204 houses in the commercial development in the village node. There is one access point that serves, there's one other access point serves one house. And it, and the other stubouts, you know, point to county-owned parkland or places that there won't be any other access. And I don't see any, or as a script, or as the transcript is that there is not really any plans at this time to be looking at those roads in the long-range transportation plan. But back to the substandard local roads, what we're having here are design exceptions or waivers about doing these roads in a way, when we do this, that won't prepare them for kind of the densities that we're looking at there for the future, in my opinion. But also, and again, this was raised at the original hearing as one of the concerns, and I didn't really see that addressed in the decision. The proposed design exception, and this is from the hearing that we had here at the Board, leave the road with travel lanes that are too narrow and shoulders that are too narrow, no bike lanes, no sidewalks, and this is all contrary to the Riverview Community Plan. It's contrary to goals 11 of the Riverview Community Plan that says they want to collaborate with the private sector development and provide safe roadway, sidewalk, pathway connections, biking, and equestrian linkages and other amenities. They want to encourage walk-to-school programs to increase safety and reduce school-related automobile trips. And they definitely want to provide sidewalks, pathways, and/or trails wide enough specifically that they say wider than five feet for people to easily pass each other or travel side by side. This developer is not providing sidewalks at all, and even the shoulder is not wider than five feet. It's not our county standard of six feet. It's only four feet. So this is inconsistent with the Riverview goals. Development across the street, and you mentioned this, the Stone, the Hawkstone development is adding a sidewalk, they may have been done in the interim, to their side of Baumboyette. And, but this developer won't be. And we should say that in order, when they got these densities, it was one home per five acres. In order to increase, under the old plan, that is not in place now, they have to, they got 10 times the density. They could improve on five acres, they could have 10 units instead of one. But in order to do that, it was supposed to be special conditions, because this is undeveloped farmland. That's what we had here. So I'm just going to, in terms of the condition that they now have, as to Baumboyette, substandard roadway collector, the developer will be required to make certain improvements consistent with the design exception or waiver that we would approve if we just approved this as it was. And they, the developer shall construct a six-foot-wide stabilized shoulder, of which four feet will be paved, in lieu of an eight-foot-wide stabilized shoulder, of which five feet is required to be paved. The developer is getting another exception to utilize 10-foot lanes instead of 12-foot travel lanes. I'm okay with that exception, but I would like to see out there. I am not okay with a design exception that allows for substandard, substandard roadway collector and not doing these bike paths, not doing the sidewalks. I think it would be, this would be a mistake for the future. It would be infrastructure that we wouldn't have and ways to make kids safe as they walk and go to school. And I'll tell you, we had hair-raising incidents or testimony. We had videos sent to us of kids walking along to school, walking along to other things with outside walks, in deep grass, in undeveloped places, against chain-link fence with cars speeding by, because we haven't looked forward and ensured this type of, these types of road improvements. So what I would like to do is remand this and with these design exceptions that are here, and remand this to reconsider the design exceptions that were, to look at the design exceptions, because I would, we would have probably done this had we approved it and moved it on in the past commission. We would have wanted this to be a condition in there. And I think we should still uphold that condition today as we move forward and ask this developer to not have us waive or approve these design exceptions, but to look for standard roads, the ones that are required by everybody else and the ones that Hawkstone apparently have across the street, and require those of this new development. So I would, I would make a substitute motion to remand, to look at this issue.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to remand, to reconsider design exceptions by Commissioner Kemp. Do we have a second? All right, substitute motion fails for lack of a second. And Adam, just to clarify things, or Cameron, I should say, we have very little latitude here. I think if we want to make any changes or additional conditions, what Commissioner Kemp suggested is really the only route that we can take, if we wanted to do that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you're correct. So typically with an application that comes before you the first time, you can either approve, you can deny, you could continue to a subsequent landes meeting, or you could remand it. In this instance, you can't deny it based on the court order, and a continuance wouldn't avail you of anything because it's the same record. So the recommendation is to approve based on what's the findings of the court. Remand is also an option because you could add additional evidence to the record at that point, but it would be going back already having a record that's established as being compensantial to support the approval.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wollstel?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I'm going to support the motion. I just, this is a very important item for the community at large to understand. I know that at least the three new Commissioners have been approached by the same group of very, very passionate folks in the east and south part of the county. And when I took a deeper dive to explain to them that there are actually certain limitations and legal restrictions against Commissioners that we just can't go around willy-nilly saying no, they didn't believe me. And this is another example. I'm going to, some of the things that were pointed from the, pointed out from the original transcript, I would, it's important for us to understand that the judge just objectively ignored all of those statements, specifically that the, they called that the speculative opinion testimony of the citizens that the road was in poor condition and their concerns about flooding are not compensantial evidence. I mean, and it went on and on to say that we have to have a reason, and it can't just be what was said, a legal reason. And I hope that the folks watching that don't want this to be a community understand that we, it's exactly as the Chair said, we have very little latitude here, and we've now lost in court, nothing against the county's legal staff, it's just that there's facts, and a judge found that the facts were against us and that they don't see why we should be saying no. So I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to say that as sympathetic as I am to the arguments that Commissioner Kemp just laid out, I really think at the point that we have a court order like this one, we, I don't see the benefit of continuing to contest this. I think that we have the court order, and it behooves us now to follow it. That's just my view.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And listen, I, there's nobody, no bigger proponent for roads here than me, especially in this part of town. But just to clarify, this project was within the Riverview Community Plan, correct? That was not up for debate? Okay. So, yeah, so I just wanted to make those comments. And Commissioner Kemp, while I understand a lot of things you said, you know, some of that stuff may, could have been brought up at the prior hearing many, many years ago. But here we are, years later, with an order. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
And just for the record, it was brought up at the prior hearing, but it wasn't addressed in the court's decision. But it's something that if we had approved it, I'm sure we would have put in there as a condition that we wouldn't, this is different than stating that, you know, that there's some, you know, that you should do this or you should do that. This is us approving waivers, design exceptions, that normally would be required, but that we were given an opportunity to say, well, the developer doesn't have to do this. This isn't even extraordinary beyond, this is what typically is required if, you know, just out of the box. But what they did is come to us and say, well, we don't want to do the typical requirements. We want this design exception, this waiver. I just want to make that clear. And, you know, and this wasn't something that was addressed in the court record at all. And it was, but it was here at the hearing, and it was something that was stated here. And I know there was a lot of focus on buffering, but this design exception, I think, is one that I, I don't think we should move forward. And I think it would be, it would behoove us to look at this again and just see if we could get, look at that design exception and make a better community for the future. And it might be something that the developer, you know, would come back with.
All right, Commissioner Owen?
I'll be fast, yeah. And I guess my confusion was I didn't see a remand. There could have been one for the design exception, but I didn't see that. From what I understood, there was a motion for denial on the 13th of 2021 without any type of remand with those instructions. So I don't see what you're saying, but maybe I missed something. Thanks.
All right. And, you know, I supported the initial rezoning, so no surprise that I'm going to support today's approval. And as I said earlier, we have very little latitude here. Commissioner Kemp is correct that County Attorney's Office has done an outstanding job of defending our actions. And through the years, we've had very few that have been overturned by the court. But I, from my recollection, I don't ever recall us remaining once it's come back to us. We've approved the item once it's been overturned by the court. May not have always been unanimous, but to my knowledge, we've always approved once it's come back from the, you know, from the judicial system. So with that, motion to approve by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Myers. No other comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right. Adam, do we have any other items?
That concludes our agenda.
Okay, we're adjourned.